Good evening. It is Monday, November 18th at 6:00 PM. This meeting is held at Wintup High School in Room 142 and it is recording live on WCAT. Ms. Hames, you please call her over.
Mr. Fabiano, Mr. Matucci, Ms. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Swob.
Present.
Mr. Vecchia.
Present.
Mr. Carron.
Here.
Mr. Catlin Banko.
Here. Mr. President Vecchia, please leave us some time to read the comments.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment? Here are none. Superintendent Howard, I do believe we have delegates and visitors this evening, starting with Laurie Galvin.
Yes. Laurie Galvin, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Accountability, is going to talk to you tonight about our MCAS results and give you a presentation along with the principals.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to direct the screen behind you. Even if you just give it a little bit, I have a condensed version of what's up here, so they're not exactly the full presentation. I didn't want to stuff you with that many pages. There we are. I don't want to say that from inside. So, it might have taken me a little bit of a corner, but start with, this is what we wanted to present to you today, is just a little overview of what our achievement results look like this year, what the district and state comparative data is. Can you see my mic? About our accountability, the highlights and the areas of focus that you'll hear from from each of the principals, regarding what they're working on, and as well as the changes for the high school competency determinations, which will affect our students going forward. I'm getting to that a little more, but primarily the students, our current sophomores and juniors. This is just a reminder, refresher from last year, we told you that the state had changed the system of how it evaluates each district and each school with the accountability data. It used to be a leveling system, you were a level one through five. Now they've changed that to performance levels, and the difference is here is these are the indicators that go into it. So you have the achievement, which is 60% for grades three through eight, and 40% for high school. The student growth, 20% at either level. At the high school, the four-year cohort graduation rate comes into play, and is 20%. At the English language proficiency is 10% at each third through eighth and at the high school level. And chronic absenteeism is 10% at grades, it actually affects three through eight because those are the only schools that get accountability ratings, but chronic absenteeism is figured in based on grades one through eight. One through 12, because it also counts on the high school as well, and their hours. So this is our 2019 English Language Arts by grades, just wanted to give you a general picture. This lowest area, red, is not meeting expectations. Yellow is students identified as partially meeting, green are exceeding expectations, and blue are exceeding expectations. This is the math, same, looking at the same thing. So you can tell. I don't know why that pops up. So, same thing. Overall, we've shown standard improvement. We have a few grade levels where we've had some, what are we looking for? Some stagnant scores. It's just kind of staying the same. We're not seeing a lot of growth, but we're not seeing a decline. So those are areas of focus that we'll be hearing about. This is the science, 2019 science, and these are the legacy scores, remember. So this is those that are failing, needs improvement, proficient or advanced. So these are the percentages in each. They're only tested, remember, in fifth grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade, or ninth grade, depending on whether they take the biology or chemistry, whatever of course individuals are taking. This wasn't a lot, I know, but I wanted you to be able to see. I'll cross over here in a second. If you look over here, each one of these is our every grade level with ELA, math, and science, as we compare to the state in Wintup. So you'll see that the red line denotes students that are not meeting expectations, while the blue line is students that are meeting or exceeding. So those top green and blue categories that you just saw on that other graph. You'll see that the number of students that are not meeting expectations in red, when you compare Wintup to the state at every grade level, you'll see that Wintup has a much lower number of students not meeting, and in almost every case, we are exceeding the state by small numbers, or in some cases, larger numbers. But, I don't know if I included that one, but I'll send you guys this graph, because it's very interesting to look at when you line up just how Wintup is doing against the And you'll see even down here, and if you look at science, so eighth grade for science, this is one of the areas that we know that we struggle. Eighth grade for the district, here, and eighth grade for the state, here. So we're still just slightly, we have more students struggling than we would want to at that level, but still not far off. I have to remember these touchscreens. Okay. This, we wanted to make sure that we had brought to your attention as well. This is our data from Desi regarding our students, our special education students who take alternative assessments. You'll see that as far as progressing, these are the areas that they're measured on. Awareness, emerging, progressing, or above progressing. There really is no such thing as above progressing, I haven't seen it yet come from the state. I don't know if you've seen it.
Not yet.
They put that in a long time ago, but I think it was in expectation of a future level of alternative assessments. As of right now, they are going higher than we're guessing. So the state has 56 students, 56% of students on alternative assessments that are progressing, and Wintup is 77%. And in math, 77% progressing for the state compared to Wintup is 92%. So our students on alternative assessments are making good strides. And I'm happy to talk to you some other time about what an alternative assessment looks like, if it's something you're all interested in. It's primarily used for our lower cognitive, special education students, who show their work throughout the year in a portfolio type assessment. I'm not going to get out of this one. Next, I'm going to invite Ms. Pearson up to talk a little bit about Gorman Fort Banks I'm happy to be here again.
Oh, okay, very good. So, this will take you to a very different place, because what we're going to talk a little bit about tonight is just what we do to get students prepared. So essentially, what you're looking at here is data that frankly has zero influence on the MCAS data that you're looking at today. Back in the year that you were looking at the data that my students would generate, which would be 17 and 18, we were not using this instrument. At that time, we were using something that's relatively archaic, I guess, by modern day standards, and that would be using the test book that we have, taking a look at the chapter and unit assessments, consolidating student responses, and trying to tease out where our areas of weakness are. So in speaking with Ms. Galvin, it didn't seem like it was going to be productive to spend much time on that. It seems as if it would be more productive to talk to you about the instrument that we're using now, and it's called iReady. I think I had spoken to you about it before, talking about adopting it. So we are now in year two, and essentially what you're looking at here is last year's year-end data. The bullets on the right-hand side, which I don't want to make this presentation for any of you, longer than it already likely will be, so I'm not going to reread those, but I would invite you to ask me any questions, if you have any, on those. iReady seems like it could be a great instrument for us. If you just have a couple of different takeaways, you'll be able to see that, we call these domains, these are the areas that comprise kind of like that whole content area of math. So it talks about number sense and operation, geometry, various things like that. If you take a look at the breakdown of data, you'll be able to see that we're able to look at student performance in terms of the domains themselves, and then the instrument also lets us drill down to the discrete skills. Those are the little skills that make up each of these domains, right? There's little skills that make up our ability to perform geometry, and those are different little skills, subskills, that make up our ability to do algebraic thinking and things like that. So it's a pretty sophisticated instrument. If we take a look at just last year's data and growth, we can see that we had some really impressive gains. We've gone from, without me standing in front of you and blocking your view, so we realized from last year's data, we began here with 80% of our students demonstrating below-grade level performance, and we ended with 31% of them needing just some additional form. So that's pretty good. How would you know that? You'd know that only if I told you what those colors mean, right? So red's never a good color, right? Anybody who ever marked red on your paper in school can use that thing. So red is the color that you really want to have to take out of matrifying lessons and say. You don't have to do that at the beginning of the year. It is something that you don't see quite as much of at the end of the year, so that's a good sign. Green is the best. Green is go. Everybody go, go to the next grade level, go to the next chapter. We love green. Yellow, nah, yellow is kind of like that one where you see the police officer and it's, what do I do? We're kind of in the same place when we see yellow here. We know that our students are not really where they're supposed to be. They're not alarming with low, but they're well, and they need some element of intervention. So essentially, that's what iReady is giving us here. There are a couple of things that are going to distinguish this math data from our ELA data, and I just want to point them out to you. Probably the very biggest one is that we do not have an RTI model for math. That means, and you'll remember, I've been talking about RTI for, I don't know, a very long time in any event, and that's our small group intervention that we have available in ELA. That is not a model that we have available in math. We don't have the staff for it, which is a big part of it. This year in particular, just giving you a forecast going forward, we also do not have those retired teachers, those two famous retired teachers that I would always talk to about, me and Kathy McKem and Lorraine Pola. I did not have the budget to put them in there this year, and so we have no small group intervention for any of our struggling students. So that's a little bit of a challenge for, well, it's not a little bit of a challenge. That's a big challenge for us frankly, in math. And so that is going to influence the data and speak to you strongly when you take a look at our ELA performance. The other thing is that the intervention piece, those students that are in the yellow, there's a lot that we can do inside of class. There's a lot that the program can do, because it's so individualized, but you can't really get large clusters of students. So you're always in that position of looking at your very medias. You're rank ordering them, and you're taking the ones that really can't even dog paddle, they just wind up sinking. So that creates a huge challenge for us in math. And the final challenge is the one that's been imposed by the Department of Education, and that has to do with the education of EL students, our English language students. Those students, their instruction is essentially confined to speaking, listening, reading, and writing, and so math is not a big component of their instruction. So when you think about all of those things, math is definitely going to be a challenge for us at our grade level. When Mrs. Grimes and I met to go over the MCAS data, one thing that was the same as it was last year, and I have a memory of telling you guys that as well, and that is that there are many, many skills that are introduced in third grade and tested on MCAS that are never introduced at our level. Multiplication, division, measurement of area, and things like that, never even touched upon. Many times, I've said to you that it's our job to expose students, and in some ways, mastery is also our job for a lot of things in math. We don't even expose them to these things. That's the way the scope and sequence works, and that's the way the standards work. So that's kind of where we are with math. Would it be all right if I just asked if there were any questions about math before we go to ELA? Okay, thank you.
Are there any things that you think that parents could do, or any online applications?
That's a good one. Thanks, Ms. Swob, because I forgot to mention that. That's one other thing. The iReady program does have a home component to it. Just like we push Lexia for ELA, iReady has that too. We are in the process of learning it. This is still a really new program. I don't want to roll anything out to parents until our teachers really have the command of it.
Because I think that would be, we have to do it. We have to do something, and we can't let it just sit like that, and if you don't have the staff or the budget for it, to think that we're going to have kids struggling in the third grade, that's not.
But if I can't support parents in being able to make that program a useful program for their students, there's no point in putting it in their hands. So I need to make sure that I've got staff that would be able to handle that. And we missed that window at curriculum night, right, because we didn't know enough about the program then. We're still in the process of getting extensive professional development. We have professional development on iReady. On our last PD day, it did not meet my expectations. We're revisiting that professional development again in December.
Are teachers interested in doing it?
The home piece or the iReady piece? Or repeating the PD?
To gear up, for training on the home piece, so that the parents could be a help.
I think they are looking forward to doing that. I think they are ready to do that. I don't think it's their front and center priority right now, because they want to get themselves to a place of being able to deal with this. So at this time, they're still, it's a very, very rich and resourceful program.
Very comprehensive.
Yes, it is. Very comprehensive program. So right now, they are hyper-focused on understanding how they can find instruction that isolates the subskills that students need to be supported in. Not the answer you wanted, but you want the honest one, right?
I do.
Okay, there you go. Okay. ELA, this is, this is just great. So I'm going to give you a second to look at that. It's actually worth giving you way longer than a second, because the data is ridiculously impressive. So you're still working with those colors. We still really, the red one is the most defensive of all of them. But when you take a look at our ELA data, on this side, you're looking at devils. On this side, you're looking at an old system we used, okay? Because remember, this is data that's coming from our students who finished with us in 2017 and 18, okay? At that time, we used the Schoolastic regional inventory. So on this side is the fluency piece. Fluency has to happen before comprehension. Students' brains are like this size, and so if they're going to be using, we'll say, you know, the entire palm for fluency, then they only have the small number of fingers to be thinking about comprehension. So we're always looking for this to happen before this happens. Again, I can't really appreciate that slide right there, but what can I show you? I can show you that 80% of our students were scoring as proficient or advanced in comprehension. The goal for this sort of data is 80% in our top tiers, and only 2-20% in our bottom two. Even if you were to take a look at, if you were to take a look at the data up there, we had 77% of our students performing an average or higher. If we add low average, and low average isn't a bad thing, right? It's still average, so it's not a bad thing. It's not what I want. It's not what any of us really want for our students, but if we look at the data just that simply, we move that up to 87%, which only leaves us with 13% of our students performing below and well below average. Of that 13%, we're representing 17 students. That's really not very bad. If you were to tease out the 17 students, you would be able to see which of those students are EL students, and which of those students are on IEPs. EL and IEP students both require specially designed instruction. So that is a very, very impressive number. On the SRI data, which is the one that's in the comprehension, that's the pie chart-looking one, we had 80% of our students scored proficient or advanced. Again, if we added in basic comprehension skills, the percentage goes up to 94%, with only eight students scoring below basic. Why a discrepancy between ELA and math? Well, I've given you some reason for the math, meaning that there are a lot of those skills that we never even target. But ELA is very, very rich in our school, and we're fortunate for that. RTI is a tremendous influence. It is a protective program, meaning that it is a program that very, very infrequently is ever canceled. So it has incredible fidelity with the use in our school. In addition, the teachers are afforded an interventionist in there. So it doesn't necessarily mean that there is an administrator in there, or a reading teacher, or a specialist of any sort. Sometimes it would just be an ESP, but the groups are small enough, and students are rotating to teacher-led groups. So we have a very big impact there. We have a strong reading department. We don't have a math department that provides those kinds of services, but the reading interventionists are unbelievably amazing. And to Ms. Swob's point, we have Lexia. And Lexia is, it just runs in the veins of parents and students, it really does. We'll get there with iReady. We didn't get there immediately with Lexia, so hang on, you won't be disappointed, you just have to exercise your patience. I'm not saying you're not, I'm just telling you, keep going, you should, you should.
Yeah, yes, no question. On ELA, on grades three through eight, on the next generation MCAS, the state was at 52 and we were at 57. So this data suggests that we should see a lot more advancement than ELA.
What year is that?
This year. 2019.
This is a different cohort.
I know it is, it's only a year to school. But my point is, if it's this good now in Fort Banks, then hopefully we will see a rising rate in ELA as it goes, as the state goes into system.
Well, that is, well, there's a lot of assumptions that are coming along with that statement, right? One of the assumptions is that the department isn't going to be changing the metrics, that the department isn't going to be changing the format of the test. You know, there's a lot of different things that come into play.
And the 57s for, meant it to be a 57 and the state a 52, that's a large span. It's bigger than it looks like when you see five discrepancy points. It's a large span. The state average for third grade over the last few years has been approximately 50 to 52%. So we're five points ahead. That's part of why we're in a reading cohort with a group of school districts on the North Shore that are really digging into the focus of the science by teaching reading, and is it embedded, and how are we using it, because we're leading the nation, and all of us on the North Shore are saying, we're leading the nation as far as Massachusetts is concerned, we're also leading Massachusetts, and we're all still in the 50s. So what's wrong with this picture? So it's a much bigger conversation to what you're saying and to what Ms. Pearson is saying as far as, they're not changing their metrics, but we need to figure out why this is happening. If we're leading the nation and as a state, you know, we're averaging 50, 52% of third grade are being proficient in ELA.
But on its face, I think that, on its face, you do make a valid point, and that point is just this, that if you take a look at this data from the year that I'm talking about, and you look at the data that Mrs. Grimes is going to present you, these students are the students that Mrs. Grimes is going to be talking to you about. And so I'm leaving you with this thought, that this instrument, the devils for fluency, this instrument, SRI for comprehension, were absolutely valid indicators of student performance. So if you're talking about just this, yes, going forward and using iReady, that'd be a tough one to say, because that's just last year's students. I have no clue what MCAS is going to look like this year, but this is definitely a reliable indicator for what we should be seeing in the other.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Thank you for having me, Nancy.
Just wanted to say, thank you for all you've done in your role, obviously, as a former school community member of Melrose, and through the years you have done as principal of Gorman Fort Banks. Great presentation, and a great job, I really appreciate it.
I really appreciate that, more than we even appreciate. So thanks so much.
Ms. Grimes, from Uptown School.
Okay, can we go back one side?
Yeah, just hold that. Let's just do this.
It's a magic screen. These 3DBB. Let me just pick up one, 3DBB.
Sometime I don't know.
So again, just to kind of reiterate what Ms. Galvin was saying earlier, when we look at the student percentage at each achievement level, what we're looking to do is compare our top half against the states to our bottom half against the states. So if we look at, this is grade three ELA. Our grade three, the top half, is 62% compared to the state, which is 56%. So that's statistically significant in terms of a difference. And then our bottom two are 38% compared to the states at 44%. We could look at, say, grade three math, for example. These are all posted online, so you can see the Department of Ed's website. Then the ATC, their bottom, top. Can you get it down a little bit without?
Yeah, just touch where it's at.
So the bottom two for the ATC are 61%, and the, I mean, sorry, the top two, and the top two for the state are 49%. Again, that's a pretty statistically significant difference. The bottom half for the ATC is 39%, and the bottom half for the state, the average, is 51%. I mean, we could look at our grade five ELA. Which is another, I mean, this is statistically very significant too. The top for the grade five ELA is 65%. The state is 40, 52%. So that's a really significant difference. So what we did for our staff meetings and our common planning time was after we looked at this in terms of how we're doing to the state, we dove deeper, and we actually went into how we compare to the state by each standard.
Doesn't like it when we jump in on things.
So when we talk about highlights, that's where, compared to the standard achievement level, that's where the ATC did better than the state, and the areas of focus where we did the same or a little bit worse than the state, for lack of a better word. So when we looked at math, we said geometry is pretty strong in all three grades, and then when we look at the area of focus, multiplying, dividing, and 100, solving problems using the four equations, fraction equivalence and ordering for fractions, and then in grade five, again, it talks about fractions. So when we look at the arts of peak homeschool in comparison to the state and standards, then our ELA, very good in vocabulary, vocabulary, key ideas and details as a strength for all three grades. What's interesting is the conventions of standard English and the conventions of standard English were either equal or less than the state, whereas in fifth grade, they kind of made up some ground, and the conventions of standard English were actually better than the state.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Any sense of why?
Why we're continuing to be slightly better than the?
Right, why you would go from being below in third grade, and by fifth grade, you're making it up.
Well, it might be the cohort that followed and went up to fifth grade. It also might be like, I know that, you know, we had had a couple of years where geometry was not that good in terms of comparison to the state. And Ms. Pearson, when I was at the Gorman School, we had the third grade at the time during the transition, so we made it, they made team goals that were focused around geometry, and they did that for a couple of years, and I think it's shown that when you look at the MCAS data, when you look at other data, and you do make it drive instruction or make it drive what the teachers' goals are, it can make a difference. And I do believe that that happened over the years. It wasn't just one year. It was a few years that we really, we kept hearing geometry, you know, we had Joe Petner come, and it was geometry, and it was just like geometry, it's like with a drop. So, and I really do believe that it made a difference, just being able to use the data to focus that way.
With the ELA though, as well, you have to remember, they have an entire mother year of school before they take that fifth grade MCAS, so. So you're looking at third and fourth grade still struggling, but somewhere in the structure of the framework in fifth grade, I'm going to say that it's a stronger focus on that conventions.
Conventions.
Because it's the only thing that really, really, what am I looking for? Yeah, not just accounts for, but it's, it's being kind of driven home through fifth grade to the right. There's more, more writing and more, I want to say more anecdotal writing on the part of students where they're bringing these pieces in.
But this is, so this is against, measured as, I said, measured against the state.
Correct.
But this is where, what they did was they drilled down and said, okay, these are the areas that were a little weaker than the state. Third and fourth grade were a little weaker.
Right, but by fifth grade, we're not.
By fifth grade, we're surpassing them.
Right, something happened.
I think it's in the fifth grade. It's in what they're bringing to fifth grade and then what they're getting in the beginning of that, before that test. Putting it all together. So we need to figure out, this is what the teachers are looking at now is, like, what, how are we going to focus on these now in third and fourth to bring them up?
I'm going to talk about that just briefly in a couple of more, just after the next slide. So the next slide is science. And, you know, interesting again, physical science, waves and their applications to technology. We did do as well as the state, but physical science, I mean, we did, we did as good or better than the state in physical science, matter and properties, we didn't do as well as the state. So again, you know, there's, these are just areas. When you drill down from the general to the standard, to the indicator in that standard, that's when you can really focus with teachers. So during our faculty meetings and our common planning time, we actually went through all the data with the teachers. We narrowed down the areas of focus. And then further, during common planning time and our staff meeting, we actually gave each teacher their students' individual responses. Now, they have new students this year, but I think that looking at your students from the last year, maybe you can look at a standard and go, oof, you know what? High students didn't do great. I wonder, I have to revisit my instruction in that standard. So it's just to keep drilling down. And that's what we, you know, and that's why it's important that we use the data to drive our instruction. What we're doing now, then, to focus, to address our areas of focus, we're using our PD days on December eleventh and January twenty-ninth for our math coach to work with our teachers on fractions. We also offer morning math now, three days a week, so that we can get the students in. We invite everyone, I mean, we welcome everyone, but we have invited a certain number of students to see if they'll come in and do their morning math. All of our math warm-ups now are focusing on fractions for the time being. In terms of ELA, our grade level teachers have developed a team goal that's focused on increasing our students' rigor when writing and completing open response questions, either short answer questions or essay questions. Our staff members did a lot of work over the summer in our curriculum plans, our year-long curriculum plans for science and social studies, including addressing updates in our science curriculum, which is STEM scopes. So they did a lot of work over the summer in those two areas as well.
I really applaud your efforts and all of your efforts, all of the principles I've seen you say. I do think that, and I hear it over and over again, that common planning time really is a process of so much of this because you bring your data together.
Yes.
And then you have, you have the faculty, the teachers, come together to actually focus on. And this is the only time that they would really have to do that. So I do applaud their effort and your effort in making this happen. It's the only way we're going to make a difference and shift the curriculum.
They do focus on data, like, daily, as you. Like, it's not just common planning time. They talk about the fall.
I know, because you collect it.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Curly, from the math school.
You don't have the touch.
I'm not competing.
So I'm going to start in similar places, Mrs. Grimes. So this website can be found, that's in terms of teacher profiles. It's a great snapshot in terms of how we do as a school and how we compare as a state. Because we can use our internal assessments and that gives us great data, right? You know, I always want to know, how do we do against other schools? Whether they're bigger, smaller, different demographics. This is a great snapshot in terms of how we did in terms of within the next generation MCAS in terms of meeting expectations, exceeding expectations, partially meeting but not meeting. So I'll start with grade six. So if we look at grade six ELA, are meeting or exceeding expectations? Sixty-four percent of our kids met or exceeded, while the state average is fifty-three percent. So that's a very strong number. Grade six math, sixty-three percent met or exceeded, while fifty, fifty-two percent, excuse me, was the state number. So again, grade six had very, very strong results. Grade seven ELA, we had forty-five percent, excuse me, meet or exceed expectations, while the state was forty-eight. And mathematics, again, forty-five and state was forty-eight. One thing we've noticed in my few years here at the middle school is we've had probably the most turnover in grade seven. So I would say that's probably one reason why. But also, if you notice, grade seven is probably the most challenging year in middle school in terms of the development of kids. And if you look at the state averages, grade seven is the lowest across the board, other than, sorry, grade eight math and science. But typically in the years past, ELA and math of grade seven has always been a sticking point for most schools. Now, if we jump to grade eight, grade eight, our students, fifty, fifty-seven percent met or exceeded expectations versus the state average of fifty-two percent. And again, being five percent above is a huge number. Grade eight mathematics, forty-five to forty-six, so one percentage below. Grade eight science, we were two percentage points below, forty-four compared to forty-six. Now, whether it's as administration, or whether it's as our teachers, or whether even our kids, we try to be, when I say competitive, in terms of pushing rigor in the classroom so our students can achieve at the highest levels. So as a staff, we look at these numbers and we can be happy, but we're never content with numbers. If you're, you know, for example, if I'm grade six, these are some very strong numbers. So if I'm, so if I'm the staff in grade seven, it is, I want to raise the bar even more. Because grade seven, this current group, has always been a weak cohort, going back to even at the ATC days. This grade six, this has always been a strong group. And I'll show you why over here. This last column over there, achieving percentile. What that does is gives you percentages of how you do versus the state. Meaning if there were a hundred schools, and a hundred being the strongest number. Our grade six ELA in math achieved a sixty-seven percentiles. It's a very strong group. They made some strong growth with their average SGP being around fifty. Our grade seven ELA in math achieved at forty-eight to fifty-three, and that's our weakest cohort. Again, I always try to aim for at least that fifty percentile or higher. If we fall a little bit below, we try to raise the bar the following year as that group moves on. In grade eight, our grade eight ELA achieved a sixty-five percent. They had growth of fifty-seven point two, which is very strong. And then our math and science were fifty-two and fifty-four. So to sum that up, if you look at the achievement percentiles, all of those subject matters in each grade, other than grade seven ELA, are above the state level, which is fantastic. So again, it's great work that's done by the middle school, but also the Fort Banks ATC. Because you get a group of kids when they come to sixth grade and you try to do your best with them. But obviously, by having those foundational skills, it makes a world of difference. And you'll see that this current group now that was in fifth, is now in sixth. It's not part of this data just yet. That's another strong group that's coming up from the other high schools.
So, just to follow up on the question, was what you were saying. So the seventh graders, you're, when you say cohort, you're comparing them to when they were in sixth grade.
Correct.
And you're saying this is a group that you know has been a little bit weaker.
It's been a very stagnant group. It's one of our higher in terms of special ed population and five oh fours. Also, in terms of social, emotional learning, in terms of the needs for that grade has always been, I don't want to say a struggle, but a little bit mediocre compared to the other grades.
So what are you seeing when you look at seventh grade last year, this year, year before?
In terms of?
In terms of, is there still a struggle regardless of this cohort? Is this, is the fact that it's seventh grade, or is it just that it's this?
I think it's a combination where it's a development of the students. And also, out of the three grades, we've had the most transition of teachers, where now I think we have a very strong group in terms of that's going to be here long-term. And I think we're going to start to see improvement across the board in grade seven. Well, that's, that's the hope.
So, so next grade, next year, seventh grade, they're going to be better anyway.
Stronger group coming up, yeah.
Stronger group coming up, so.
Yep.
Is it the kids or is it the student, is it the teachers? I guess that's what you need to tease out.
It's tough to, it's tough to tell. And honestly, from year to year, you might not see a pattern. But this group, like I mentioned, it's been a weaker cohort.
Yeah.
But our goal is, by the time they move on from eighth grade, we try to get them as ready as they can for the ninth grade curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to talk about the highlights and areas of focus. Now, that snapshot gave you kind of, as a whole, as a school, how we achieved. Now, these are some of the biggest takeaways that I found. So every year, the state sets targets for your school. So whatever you scored in any particular area or a subgroup, what they try to do is say, this is what you scored. They expect you to improve. No matter what challenges you face, they always expect improvement. They want to raise the bar. What we noticed is that we met or exceeded our achievement targets in ELA, math and science. So whatever we scored the year before, the state set a target, and we met or exceeded in all three of those areas in grade six to eight as a group. ELA met their targets for growth in terms of, they have the, for example, ELA has always historically, as we talked about early, has always done well in winter. So those targets can be difficult to reach. Our assistant principal, Ms. Branzese, worked very hard with their ELA department. That's a very, that's a strength of hers in terms of meeting with them to really dig into the curriculum. And they were able to meet their targets for growth in grade six, seven, and eight, which is very difficult to do. We exceeded our target in the category of chronic absenteeism. So part of how we are judged as a school and district is, what's the percentage of students that are chronically absent? Ten percent of the school year, which would be eighteen days. So we worked hard with our staff, our guidance council, put supports in place, put things in place, and we exceeded our targets as a school in the category of chronic absenteeism. Our students are coming in, as I mentioned earlier, stronger academically. That's granted through work at the Fort Banks ATC. Our sixth and seventh grade groups currently right now are very, very strong. Now, areas of focus, meeting the needs of our lowest performing students. I put that in quotes because now the state has a heavy focus of not just school-wide, taking the lowest twenty to twenty-five percent of your students who've been in your building for at least a year. So for us, that would be our seventh or eighth grade students. So they take, no matter how strong your students are, take the lowest twenty-five percent, they average their ELA and math scores together. And what they do is, they give you a list later than what you would expect, but you can calculate your own in terms of, here's your lowest twenty-five percent in grade seven and eight. So that way, it's an opportunity for you to put more interventions and support in place. So that's an area, what I would say we struggled with, but something across the board as a state is they want to target those students who need that extra support. And that might not be any students who are on any type of plans or things like that. So we, so this year, it's a focus of ours of really looking at that cohort of kids in grade seven and eight and really digging into specific standards or sub-skills at each grade level.
And that's part of the new achievement indicators is those twenty-five, that percentage of students are counted twice. So they take all of your students and they give you an accountability rating based on those scores. Then they take your lowest twenty-five percent, they do theirs again, then they take those two and average them together. And that's how you get your grade level piece. So their, their whole focus is, if we can get every school in the state to bring up their lowest twenty-five percent, then all scores will rise. So they're doing that by making us count twice.
And areas of focus, we continue to use that data to drive instruction. And again, going back to common planning time, trying to use that time effectively and efficiently so teachers can work together, whether it's at the start of the school year or throughout the school year, in terms of to make the gains that we want to see from our kids. Continue to provide support for students who show patterns of being absent. Typically, students, if they struggle with absenteeism at the elementary level, it's a lot of times the same students at middle school. So we want to try to identify those students and try, try to do our best to limit those patterns because attendance doesn't change overnight. And there's a variety of reasons why students are absent. So we try to work with our staff, guidance council, adjustment councils, to identify those needs. It's not perfect, but we did, we did a tremendous job this past year by improving that rates. And last but not least, area of focus on this slide of being more efficient, effective during our ice block model, which is intervention, challenge, enrichment. We're trying to make some changes in seventh, eighth grade so we can really target these lowest performing students to make sure they get what they need for the school year.
Question? Yeah, just, can you talk to me a little bit about what you're doing for those top-level students?
Yeah. So typically, so for example, for our math students, we have the accelerated math program in grade six, seven, and eight, where we're trying to raise the rigor, where there are even different levels of students within that accelerated math class. So we're trying to differentiate the instruction in there to give the more challenging material, to push those students as a cohort. Because those, those are the kids that are the high-level kids that we want to see when they go off to high school, continue on that academic path of whether it's, you know, AP Calculus, AP Stats, or even if you're a student who's not in the accelerated class. If you're in the, what's called a grade six, grade seven, grade eight math classes, we want to push them and differentiate where, a big push of mine is differentiating homework, where not all students have to do the same homework in class. And it's, it's a change of philosophy for a lot of teachers, but there's a way to do it, and that's one nice way to kind of push the rigor with those kids, where everybody's getting the standards, where you can kind of raise it a little bit more for the students who need to be pushed. So a couple of highlights that don't stick out in the other slides because they're buried in other MCAS data reports, is our special ed students are achieving at the seventieth percentile in the state in ELA in mathematics, which is impressive. Our sixth grade individually from ELA achieved at the ninety-five percentile for ELA, for again, special education students, which is tremendous. Our ELs and former ELs achieved a sixty-eight percentile in ELA and sixty-second percentile in math compared to the state. So again, those areas are tremendous. When I look at it, we're above that fifty, which is kind of average across the state, but they're, but they're achieving even higher. Our economically disadvantaged students achieved at the sixty-ninth percentile in ELA and sixty-first in math. So again, those things that are really, that really stuck out. Because again, these are, you know, you can make an argument that special ed, ELs, former ELs, and economically disadvantaged are some of the most challenging students possibly to work with and because they face bigger challenges. And that kind of sums up the middle school. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Curly. Every year, Mr. Curly and I are twinning with our blue suits and blue ties. These are our only suits that we own. So, you know, a lot of what I'm going to talk about is going to flow just the same way that Mr. Curly's presentation did, just in the sense that the high school finally has taken on the next generation MCAS. So, which was a little bit of a shift for us. We have, we're the last holdout with the legacy MCAS. So this is our first year with our new achievement levels. And this is kind of our first year of the new data with the, with the new test. I'd like to start off by showing you the. Like, the first chart I'd like for you guys to look at is, shows our ten trade students and how they scored on the next generation math test last spring. Important for me to point out to you that sixty-two, sixty-two percent of our math students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations category, which was above the state level, which was at fifty-nine. The student growth percentile in mathematics was also, was the SGP, was at forty-eight point seven, which like Mr. Curly said, the fifty percentile is considered to be the average. So that was just shy of averaging growth. And the achievement percentage, percentile for math was fifty-six, which again, is above, above the average, what the state considers to be average. As far as the, the, so yeah, we did SGP and the achievement percentile for math. So moving on to the English Language Arts chart, very similar. ELA, again, across the district has always been a real strong suit. Our students have always done well in ELA. ELA scores were slightly better than math, but again, above the state average in meeting or exceeding expectations. Our school was at sixty-eight percent, where the state average was sixty-one percent. So again, those are, that's our top, top tier of students in scores. The average student. The average student growth in ELA was, uh, fifty-four point seven, above that fiftieth, uh, percentile rank. And our achievement level in ELA was sixty-three, uh, in the sixty, sixty-third percentile. Again, Mr. Curly kind of said that, uh, he described that pretty well. If you took a hundred schools, uh, and, and took their average scores, uh, went to high school, would be sixty-third on that list. So that's, that's pretty impressive. Uh, I was really impressed with both our math and English, uh, test, uh, scores as they continue to be, uh, above the state average across the board. And certainly this year, we didn't know what to expect as there was a, a shift in, in the, in the, uh, the format of the test. The, the next generation MCAS is computer-based and I think that last year, our, our teachers and our students were, were pretty cautious in the way that they approached that. And it's good to see that, um, some of the work that they did, uh, and that they were able to, to stay calm and get through it and get some scores up there that were, uh, above the state average. Uh, the next thing I wanted to look at down here was, is the, uh, science and technology and engineering MCAS. This is the test that goes, that is to, our ninth grade students take. Uh, it's technically the biology MCAS. That, we still take the legacy version of the MCAS. So that is not the next generation. That was last year was computer, was not computer-based, it was paper pencil test. So we're going by our, our old achievement levels. Um, science compared to the math and English is a little bit lower. Again, our school, uh, sixty-seven percent of the students scoring proficient are higher, uh, which is just a little bit below what the state average is. Uh, and all the way across the board, everything was just a, a little bit, uh, a little bit lower, including our, uh, they don't do, they don't calculate SGP for science. So, uh, as, as we move a little bit further on to the presentation, Laurie's going to spend some time with you guys talking to you about how they correlate the scores from the legacy MCAS in comparison to the, um, next generation MCAS results. So to highlight, uh, to talk about a few highlights that we have. Again, our ELA score is sixty-eight percent of our students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations category, well above the state average. In math, sixty-two percent of our students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations category, uh, again, still above the state average. Uh, the, our ELA met our targets for both achievement and growth, which again, is a hard thing for us to do because our ELA scores are very good. So our targets are very high, so if they're meeting those targets, that's very good. And, um, in addition, this is something that wasn't on any of the slides that I showed you, but something worth mentioning is that we met our target for our four-year cohort graduation rate, which is something that we, uh, worked hard at last year to make sure that we were, um, keeping track of our students and they, and getting our, our students through, uh, the high school on time. So our. The target was eighty-six point nine. So, I mean, I can, I can get it to you.
You don't have that on your top of your head now.
I, I almost had it because we, you know, we focused on it a lot, but we, you know, every year that the, the, the state will set that target based on what our rate was. So, you know, so they push us every year to, to do a better job with that. But that's something we had talked about last year and even the year before in our presentations is something that we knew at the high school we needed to work on. Because I feel like we, you know, we do a good job of getting all our kids through, but when you look at how many kids, it's only taking four years for them to get through. Um, you know, you, you can lose some kids off the end and, uh, some kids, if they fail classes, you don't catch them up, they don't graduate with their class and that counts against you. So it's really about making sure you keep all your students together as they move through, um, and building, and supports for the students that are, you know, struggling and giving them off the end. So, uh, areas of focus for us. Certainly going into this year, even though we've already done the next generation MCAS test, is to continue to adjust our practice in the classroom, uh, to help our, our students better prepare for that version of the MCAS test. Um, there's, there is some, uh, like test taking strategy stuff, I think that we still want to be talking to our kids about because it is a much different test. But there's also, um, just, uh, little things that the teachers are going to be doing, um, now that they're more familiar with the format of the next gen test. Uh, more MCAS prep opportunities, uh, during and after the, during school day and after school. Always looking at lower class sizes, particularly in biology, science, uh, was the only one, it's a relative weakness, I think, for us. And we have to, um, work on those ninth grade biology classes, they tend to be a little high. I think a lower class size there would, would help us. Um, I didn't include this, but obviously lower class sizes in both math and ELA would be ideal, uh, and it would certainly, uh, help us. Uh, continued co-taught courses for math, science, uh, and ELA in the ninth and tenth grade level. That's something we put in place a few years ago. I think it's, uh, one of the main reasons why we're continuing to move forward with our scores. I think we're at a point now where, uh, you know, like Mr. Curly had just said, some of our, um, are struggling students or identified as high need students, our ELL students, our special education students, um, they need additional supports. And now we're able to provide that to them in a generalization, general education setting with, um, some special education, uh, specialized, uh, sort of instruction from special education teachers. So, uh, we're going to continue to do that as we move forward and that's something that has been very beneficial to us. Um, and just continue to use the data that, um, we're collecting to drive what we're doing in the classroom. Same as the other schools doing that through department time, common planning, um, and just focusing on, on, uh, areas of need and certainly students that are in need.
Maybe you can speak to some of this, so what you're doing this year with all the teachers and grade number curriculum?
Yeah, so, so that's, this year, we're actually, we've taken on a big project to kind of overhaul, uh, the current curriculum we have in place. Uh, we're working, uh, both Laurie and I and the faculty are working on, um, designing, uh, units and lesson plans using the UBD format. We work with, also with a consultant, which is understanding by design. Um, we're working with a consultant who's come in and we have a year-long professional development, uh, plan set up for our students to meet. Uh, and learn this, this new, um, this new way for them to, to design the units and the lessons, uh, curriculum network that they have per department. Um, and next year, we're going to begin to, um, do more of an implementation of that, uh, that curriculum stuff. With the hopes that, uh, we can gain, you know, establish more consistency with our curriculum documents across all content areas. Uh, and certainly one of the biggest things that's come out of it is, um, just way more, um, you know, solid professional conversation about curriculum. Um, it's, you know, that which is at the, the core of our instruction and what we do. Um, and we're actually spending so much time talking about that within our departments and our teachers are finding that highly beneficial to them. Just the process of, um, you know, talking about essential questions, um, you know.
Really unpacking the standards and understanding what these new performance-based standards look like in a classroom design and in a unit design. So I think it's, uh.
And so, you know, they're, they're doing that within their departments and then with the, with the amount of professional development time we have now, we're able to, to break out and as a whole staff, talk about these things and switch our groups around. So people are really learning, um, enlightening it and moving forward. And I, I have no doubt that we're going to see, um, that work is gonna, is gonna come out in, in, you know, some of the, some of the scores in our tests and just, you know, overall achievement that we're going to see from our students, so.
Great, thank you. Excellent. So just, I'm going to try and plug in messages, I know we've kept you long, as we expected. Um, this slide I put in just to show you, these are all of our schools. For, for ranks, obviously doesn't have sufficient data to get the kids tested. Uh, the outfit for Cummings was at seventy-two percent, considered substantial progress towards meeting targets. Middle school is at forty-six percent, moderate progress towards targets. And high school, thirty-four percent, modest progress towards targets. But again, remember what all of them were saying to you earlier, that the progress towards targets is based on the way the targets set out from to begin with. So there is, you know, there's a lot of range there when it comes to that. As a district, we were at fifty-seven percent substantial progress towards targets. And then I put this together for you, um, just to show, I, I don't know how familiar a lot of you are, when you go into DESI and you look at the profiles, there's a document on there called the DART that they, DESI does for us every year. And they compare us to like districts in their minds. These are the like districts in their minds of us from last year. Um, I took the eight, two thousand and eighteen DART, um, cities and towns. They're, they have close to the same population, close to the same percentage of students on, um, that are economically disadvantaged, close to the same numbers of special education, everything else, so they compare us. So you can see the only district, which is Ludlow Mass, which is out in Western Mass, is the only districts that's in our DART document that is higher than us right now. Um, then we are, you know, a little bit higher than both Stoughton and Abington and considerably higher than Woburn, South Hadley, Millbury and Hudson. And this is who the state considers as to be ours. I went in and pulled all their individuals so I could see if they ran the same dart as they did last year, what it looked like. So this is the last piece that I want to kind of fly through and I put this all in here for you so I can explain it to you. But I think this is what's been the most important to us, one of our parents and home of our high school students. The changes that have come about now for the competency determination for high school students. So students in the class of twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, so this year sophomores and juniors, they must earn the next generation MCAS scaled score that's equivalent to the legacy score. So that's at least a two forty on the ELA and math test. And the scale score between two twenty and two thirty-eight. If they get a scale score between two, two twenty and two thirty-eight, they must also complete an EPP, an educational proficiency plan. So this is, was determined this past summer. They just put it in, they literally sent us this like right before they sent us all the results and said, gear up. So it's quite this kind of thing. Um, so this is just to give them more time, people more time to become more familiar with the test over the next couple of years, basically what that says. But this is what I want to show you. So this is the old format, advanced proficient, the yellow is needs improvement and the red is failing. This is the new, exceeding expectations, meeting expectation, partially meeting and not meeting. So what the state has done is tried to align that so you can see what it looks like now. What used to be passing right here in the needs improvement is no longer passing with the new scores.
Whoop, just went over one.
Okay. It's not good enough. All right? So this is, this is their new line to show us that what used to be passing is no longer passing. What used to be proficient is only partially meeting expectations. Right? So anybody that falls in these areas, and they did one more graphic to explain a little better. These are the old scores, two hundred to two forty. These are the new, four forty to four seventy-two. So if anyone falls in this area of two twenty to two forty over the next, two twenty to two thirty-eight over the next two years, they have to do an EPP and pass their educational proficiency plan as well as that score in order to graduate. If they get a two forty or, they got a two forty above on the legacy, or they get a four seventy-two or above on the new exam, they will pass on math. They don't have to do this. But this is going to put a large chunk of our kids in this area. Do you know on hand how many?
Um, I would say, yeah, I, thirty-six right now, I think we have.
So thirty-six students this year that fell into this category. So they've already been put on EPPs. Everyone is already on EPPs. So they, that will take them through, they have to progress through that progress, um, in order to graduate. They've done their best job to do a nice crosswalk so that it's not, um, and, you know, it may over an amount of work or something for students. Uh, but it, it shows that they are meeting the proficiency standards that are expected with the new, new system of monitors. Um, this is just a number format, which is also in there to show you, so just tells you for each group. Depending on what they get, have, what they need in order to meet the graduation requirements. And I put these in for you as well, just so you'll have them if you want to look at them, gives you what each one is and, um, it's laid out. And the last slide is just to break down the school year, which was speaking about. So this grade, ninth grade right now with the asterisks, they're the first administration of the next generation that has to reach that. But, you know, the new, um, accountability standards. But, you know, I think that this is something with parents, we're going to be putting this up on the district website after this evening. So if public parents who have any questions or concerns, they can feel free to reach out. And if there ends up being a wide number of parents, we can do something, you know, get together a conversation with them if it would help to clarify things. But I think for the most part, between, uh, Mr. Crombie, his administration and the guidance department, all the kids have been reached out and spoken to. They understand what's expected of them and are in a good place. Anybody, sorry for taking up so much time, but does anybody have any questions for you?
Any questions for Ms. Galvin or any of the principals?
Great job.
I'd like to thank Ms. Galvin for helping support the principals and, and helping them put together this, um, presentation. Our goal was to make it understandable for folks watching as well as school committee members. Sometimes for us, we do this work every single day. And I, when, as I was watching this and watching the principals, um, give their presentation and how consistent they were in their presentation and and being able to share the information in a light way, even though we're talking about some students in kindergarten and some students postgraduate, uh, you know, up to age twenty-two. The, the message is the same. The principals understand their students, they're working, our teachers are working hard every day to look at data. Uh, we're always challenged with the Department of Education flipping the coin and changing the rules, uh, quite often. And to keep up with that level of information, um, requires a great deal of attention. Between the common planning time and then just general teachers in a ability to focus themselves on the data. So they're not just doing it during common planning time or, or during, you know, uh, staff meetings. Teachers are looking at data day in and day out, uh, even when they're not at work. Uh, so I applaud the teachers for doing that good work and the principals for orchestrating it at home. Um, but I felt like this year's presentation certainly was understandable by all. Uh, and if any parents have questions or concerns, we, like Ms. Galvin said, we're going to be open to having deeper conversation with those, uh, who like to look at data and who like to dig a little bit deeper. Um, you know, which is a sort of a higher level conversation, uh, for some folks. But hopefully this gave, uh, parents and the committee enough information to see, um, that we are doing a very, very good job with our students. And it's because of the, the administration and the staff that we have. And we have some great kids, a lot of great kids, um, that are working really hard. Um, school is hard, middle school is hard, I have one at home. So I understand sort of that whole, you know, sixth through eighth grade and, and that seventh grade sort of dip and what happens when you get the kids. And by the time you get them to Mr. Crombie, they're typically in good shape. So we're, we're working hard. So any questions that folks have, please feel free to, uh, email Ms. Galvin. And she will put it in the right place and I give it to her because she is the director of curriculum instruction and accountability. So thank you, Laurie, very much. And I'm going to say, if no one has any more questions for the principals, I would like to, uh, release them so they can all look at data.
Thank you, awesome job.
Great, good, great, thanks.
You can leave the door open.
Moving on with our meeting, we have the October seventh, twenty nineteen meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matzis.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I have to abstain from October twenty-first, I was not present.
There are two abstentions, uh, for, uh, the affirmative, zero and the negative, and the motion is adopted. We have the minutes for the October twenty-first, twenty nineteen meeting. Do I have a motion to approve that? Motion by President Vecchia. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Swope. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Stand.
We have five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one abstentions, the ayes have it. Two abstentions. The ayes have it and the motion is adopted. That's four in the affirmative, yes. Uh, moving on with financial and business procedures. We have warrant SVW twenty dash eight and the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and one cent. Do I have a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Motion by President Vecchia.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Swope. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We have payroll warrant SPW twenty dash six, the amount of six hundred and ninety-one thousand, hundred and eighty dollars and thirty cents. Do I have a motion to approve the warrant?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell, seconded by Ms. Swope. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Stand.
That's four in the affirmative, zero in the negative, two abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion is adopted. And budget transfers, which is finding your, can be found in your packet, and the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Do I have a motion to approve the budget transfers?
Motion.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Perrin, seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on those motions? The ayes, uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Opposed, abstentions, that's six in the affirmative, zero in the negative. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We have quite a few buildings and grounds requests.
I'd like to make a motion, we take them all at once, if possible.
Motion by Mr. Perrin, seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on the motion? The ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. All right. Moving on, subcommittee reports. Ms. Powell, Policy Subcommittee?
Policy Subcommittee met tonight to discuss the adoption of allowing, policies that will allow us to distribute materials from community groups. We have an agreement on that, and we'll present that policy at the next school committee meeting.
Perfect. Superintendent's report?
So I forwarded a copy of the superintendent's report to you all in an email. As you know, with tonight's presentation, I wanted you to be able to take a look at that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And certainly will incorporate this into the next meeting and double up on the report, just touch on these as a highlight. The only thing I do want to touch on is just athletically, we've closed out our fall season. We've had over 200 athletes participate, that's over 40% participation rate. Three of our six teams made the state tournament. Coach Tracy Matucci from the girls soccer team was nominated, and the girls soccer team were nominated as sportsmanship award. We had 11 All-Stars, one Eastern Mass All-Star. And our girls soccer won the, oh, I explained that the MIAA Team Sportsmanship. And cheerleading placed second at the NEC's and regionals and advancing on to the state.
Awesome.
State. So I've wanted to make sure I've closed out athletics. Football is not fully closed out yet, so we'll have some more information on our All-Stars and any of the NIS All-Stars and their final record at the end, hopefully, this season. So if you had any questions on this, I'm happy to answer it. If not, I'll highlight a few more things next meeting.
Personnel?
Personnel, at this time, we have no appointments. We do have a resignation of Ms. Nikki Dine, who was our Adjustment Counselor here at the high school, who sent a very lovely note to me in the mail today as long as completed her exit survey. And she is moving on to a position much closer to home for her, so to cut down her travel. She was sad to go after four years, and talked about the relationship she has built here. Retirements, at this time, we have none. And we are posting for an assistant kitchen manager at the Cummings School, a lead cook manager as well, and the Adjustment Counselor at the high school. And we did repost the theater manager position here at the high school, which is a stipended position, which was vacated when the person who was working here as an ESP took a job in another community. So those are the postings that we have. And through the chair, please, under new business, the textbook material and discard request, I'd like to table that for the next meeting as I receive some additional information tonight that I want to incorporate into that before you take a vote.
Okay. Seeing no public comment this evening, public relations, Mr. Perrin?
I've got nothing back here. Also?
Paul? Anything goes starts Thursday night. If you don't have your tickets yet, winthropdrama.com. That's the 21st, 22nd, 23rd at 7:00 p.m. and Saturday at 2:00 p.m. as well.
I have two quick items. The Team Derek fundraiser for Derek Marino, who has strong ties to Winthrop, is this Friday evening in Malden. He's now a Medford resident, I encourage everyone to donate and attend. You could find a link to that on Eventbrite or on Facebook. Also, a member of the Shore Collaborative Board of Trustees, which is a school in Chelsea. And that school just finished their perfect audit for the year. President Vecchia?
Tomorrow night is the Fall Forum, 6 o'clock, at the Bob Delio Senior Center.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by President Vecchia, seconded by Vice Chair Perrin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion is...